Good afternoon, everyone. It's 4:00 PM on July 27th. This is the City Council's special meeting to cover the introduction of the budget for the year. We do have a couple of presentations on this special agenda, so I've called the meeting to order, and I will move to the special agenda, which includes item 2.1. Shall I do these separately, Mary Ellen?
Yeah.
Item 2.1, which is presentation, discussion, possible action on the FY 2025-2026 proposed budget. And 2.2 is presentation, discussion, possible action on calling a public hearing on the City College Station FY 25-26 proposed budget for Thursday, July 24, 2025, at 6:00 PM, City Hall, City Council chambers. That second item, that second item we'll have to vote on to do that, so I'll wait for that and then for the presentation, which is item 2.1. Mr. City Manager, did you want to make any opening comments on the recommended budget from CMO?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you all know, part of my duties in the city charter is to present you with a recommended budget, so that's what we're doing today. You have that in your hands, and then we'll do an overall presentation. For anybody who might be listening, this is kind of just a general overview and kicks off the themes and some of the high points of the budget, and then hopefully sets the stage for you all as you review it. And we go through the process of taking questions and going through the detailed portions and making any modifications or things that the council sees fit. And then we'll talk about the calendar as we go through this, but a process whereby it eventually is adopted along with the tax rate in August. I would be remiss if I didn't first really just thank everybody on staff who worked so hard to put this together, obviously Mary Ellen and her folks who do the lion's share of the work when it comes to the body of this document and everything that means. But as you all know, we all, you included, spend a lot of time each year developing this, and got to meet with the media earlier today, and one of the questions was, well, you know, you go through this budget congress process, you do these things, how long does it take you to put it together? And I said, well, that meeting is pretty fast. I said, but to me, it's kind of like if you ask somebody, how long did it take you to win the Super Bowl? And you say, oh, it was about three and a half hours. You negate everything up until that point. And so I think one of the reasons that it is done pretty well when we get to that point is we spend a lot of time through, you know, strategic planning with the council, through management team work, working within the departments to try to develop a budget that really is what the council and the community is looking for. You'll hear some of the high points here, but to say I'm certainly proud of this budget. Everything we do, I always say we try to look back five years and forward five years. So while this budget and what we're talking about in the next fiscal year is really important, and there'll be some really specific things.
[Music]
It's very prophetic there. We always try to look at not only what the impact will be on services and fiscally this year, but as it goes out into the future. And I think that's one of the things we do best at this city and one of the reasons that we've been able to be successful when it comes to maintaining a high level of service and adding a lot of value to our, the services we provide to our citizens. And just to kind of conclude, I guess, you know, hard for me not to say something about everything that's going on in central Texas right now. Certainly, hearts go out to those people and terrible tragedy, and also to the many people in roles like ours and our counterparts who are doing everything they can to kind of try to deal with what's going on down there. And I guess it just hits home for me when we go through this budget process, and we're going to talk about a lot of things that may not seem super important, given everything that's going on, but they are equally important and also underlines really the work that the people that we all get the opportunity to lead do on our staff, to prepare us and to recover and to do everything they can to help us to avoid these really terrible situations. But pleased to present this budget to you guys and look forward to hearing the discussion. And again, just hope and pray for all those folks who are dealing with things who are in the same budget season we're in right now and just can't help but think about their mindset as they go about looking forward and feel very blessed and honored that we get to have the conversations we do here today. So we'll kick it off and let Mary Ellen run through this. You guys, please ask any questions you have, and obviously there'll be many opportunities to go through specific parts of the budget, but hopefully this gives you a good general idea and a place to start. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I guess on Thursday, the workshop session, we will hear from the outside agencies, so that'll be presented to us at that time. And then the workshop is on a week from Wednesday, 16th, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll have a lot more time to dig into it after you've had a chance to read it. Mary Ellen, do you want clarification questions as you go along, or would you want us to wait and have you go back and work your way through the questions?
It doesn't matter to me, however you want to do it. If you want to just stop me while I'm there, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, I'll tell you what.
If you want me to keep rolling, I can do that, too.
You get a running start and keep rolling, and maybe somebody will stop you for a question, or we can accumulate questions and ask them at the end. We'll take it either way. Mary Ellen, the floor is yours.
On behalf of the City Manager's Office and the management of the City of College Station, I'm presenting to City Council today the FY 26 proposed budget. The proposed budget, to the best of our ability, we've tried to consider specific things, and there's been a lot of specific financial things that may impact us in the next year and the years to come, including changes from the federal government, changes from the state legislature, changes that are happening across the street over at A&amp;M, as well as the service expectations from our community. How we do this budget is we look at not just the impacts of where we're sitting at today, but where it might impact us five years from now, because we wouldn't want to bring to use anything that we didn't think was going to be sustainable for this city and for this community. The budget proposed for FY 26 is $474,225,698. That is a decrease of 51.74% in capital and a net budget decrease of 12.42%. The decrease in capital is because of the capital appropriations and the way the process works for capital appropriations. Appropriations are additional budgets that are needed to complete current capital plan, so what was in the plan already. And these appropriations fluctuate based off of any new projects that are added, as well as increases needed for the existing project. Bottom line, the decrease in the budget is because we asked for a significant amount of appropriations in prior years, and we don't need an additional amount of significant appropriations this year. One of the things that we've considered significantly in our budgeting process over the last several years is the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. In fact, we tied several of our fees, including the planning fees, the drainage fees, and the roadway maintenance fees, to that index overall. We look at it a little bit differently than you might hear on the news. We look at it over a fiscal year basis. As of right now, we are sitting at a 2.25% increase by the time we get to the end of this fiscal year. We anticipate that we will be at a 3% increase, which is where we were for FY 24. We did receive preliminary taxable values from the Brazos Central Appraisal District. Our preliminary taxable values are up 15%, with new values contributed within the city limits to about 3%. Year-over-year, the increase by category, meaning the single-family residential average increase, is 4.5%. Multifamily and commercial have increased 31% and 21.9% respectively. Those increases, coupled with the tax rate that is set by City Council, is what determines the amount of revenue from the ad valorem taxes that we'll receive for the city for FY 26. The way the ad valorem taxes are calculated is if you think of the two on the outside as the bumper rails when you're bowling, those are essentially the no-new revenue rate, which is the property values from last year, what it would take, what we would have to adjust the tax rate to be to generate the exact same property value, revenue from those properties from last year. The voter approval rate is the one that you hear about, the 3.5% ceiling. That is, the combined M&amp;O and debt rate, as well as any unused increment, cannot go over the 3.5% that is set, or if council chose to go over that, we would have to go out for a tax rate election. The reason why we do this process so early in the year is to preserve for council the decision, if they wanted to go out for a tax rate election, they could make that choice. There are certain legal deadlines we'd have to meet, so I'm standing in front of you with an estimated tax rate. Before I show you the estimated tax rate, I wanted to show you two specific factors that are impacting what those estimates are. The chart on the left-hand side, which is the blue chart, shows the freeze taxes that have been, or within the city since 2020 until now. The assessed frozen valuations have increased by over 100% since 2020. Those are the valuations that are frozen from elections made by people 65 and over. The frozen valuations are not considered in the no-new revenue rate. The second chart, which is the chart...
Mayor.
Yes?
Please, please.
That last sentence, can you expound on that, please?
So there is a, basically a tax return that goes into determining what the no-new revenue rate is. It's not as simple as saying, oh, the, what is the rate need to drop for you to be able to do the math? There's a whole bunch that goes into that. One of those things has to do with the amount of freeze taxes. The freeze taxes last year compared to this year has grown, and that does not factor into that no-new revenue rate when that number is determined.
It is not calculated in there.
It is not.
And moving to slide five, real quick. Net taxable values up 15%. New value only contributed 3%. Single-family up 4.5%, multifamily up explosive 31%, and commercial up 22. My question to you and/or Jeff is, how do those numbers compare to years past?
So in years past, if, I don't believe you were on council during COVID, but during COVID, I stood up here and I said, our multifamily rates, the valuations on our multifamily had decreased. And those, that decrease, we believed at the time was primarily because multifamily makes their money off of rents. So the thought process from the people that actually do all of that would have been that there would have been defaults on the rents, and people would not have been able to make their multifamily debt payments, because there would have been defaults on the rents, the valuations would have gone down. We did not see that. So what we are seeing now, I believe, is an adjustment in the multifamily and commercial from depressed rates that had been from several years prior, where residential rates may have gone up, but not those rates.
And last question through these slides, the jump in the existing taxable, single-family residential home or residential from $397,000 to $422,000. How does that leap compare to historical data?
The 6.24% would be lower than what the historical data has been for that average taxable residence increase.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen, go back to number seven you were on, because I think there's another important point to be made here on that frame on the left, which is the frozen assessed value. You don't show the overall tax roll for each of those years, but you will in another slide somewhere else, I suspect, or certainly in the book we have here. It's important to recognize that the entire tax roll has increased each of those years as well.
Correct.
And so the amount that's freeze assessed value may be the same proportion, or maybe you're arguing that it's actually increasing as a proportion of the total tax roll?
Yes, that's what we're indicating.
Okay, that's the reason you're presenting this.
Yes, that's what we're indicating.
Is that we're freezing a little bit higher percentage of our total tax roll, but our total tax roll is going up.
Right, the total tax roll's going up, but so is the percentage that is the freeze assessed value.
And so that's why you present it here as a factor that kind of limits your calculations throughout.
Right, and it's a factor in that this isn't as simple as you might say when I'm explaining to you what these tax rates are and how they're determined. There's a lot of other factors that go into this math to determine what the tax rate barriers might be. And those two key ones that we wanted to point out, one had to do with the freeze assessed value, because the proportion is going up. That proportion is going to affect the math on the no-new revenue. The second one is the maroon side. That maroon side is the sales tax credit, the sales tax credit on the property tax rate. Our sales tax within the City of College Station is a half a percentage higher than it might be in other areas of the state. Because of that, when this tax return is done to determine what our voter approval rate is, there is a credit that is given for the sales tax that we would have collected to offset that property tax. That percentage is going down. That's what this graph is showing, is that we are not getting the offsets that we may have gotten in 2022 and 2023.
On your frozen value, isn't that equivalent to essentially a penny per year on your property tax rate?
It's a little bit more than that right now.
The overall tax roll you haven't gotten to, that's more like $14 billion, something like that?
Yes.
So this is about $2 billion out of $14 billion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Another question from Ms. McLean.
Okay, Mary Ellen, pretend I'm a second grader and explain the sales tax credit on property tax rate, please.
Sure. So the way the sales tax credit works is, back in the day, long before I had anything to do with College Station, probably before or right after I was in college, the City Council had voted that they wanted the sales tax rate within the city limits to be slightly higher than it might be in other locations. When they did that, it was because they knew we had people coming into town for A&amp;M football games, and we would collect an additional amount of sales tax from those individuals that would help keep our property taxes lower, because we wouldn't need as much in property taxes, because we were collecting that extra little bit in sales tax. That extra little bit in this tax return that gets done to determine that no-new revenue and voter approval rate, that extra little bit, we receive a reduction or a credit in what our 3.5% can be. We are getting less of a reduction, because there's less of a credit.
Okay, so basically, that was set up to ensure that we were actually doing with that money what we intended, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I believe there's been a significant correction, and probably even more so, that needs to happen within the commercial valuations within the city. Aside from the correction from COVID, overall, has the district, there's probably a tax appraisal question versus yours, but have we, how's that commercial rate or the valuation fluctuate?
So there is, I didn't show everything that goes into this tax return, because I would bore you silly. But one of the other factors that goes into the tax return to determine these rates is how much is in litigation and how much of that litigation has been settled. So there is a significant amount of property that is within litigation, and the litigation amount that sits out there for several years typically is the multifamily and the commercial pieces. There's commercial property that files every year, so.
Councilmember, I think to your point in talking offline to the appraisal district and then other people, when, in several cases, I think people can look at the valuation, what's on the tax rolls versus what sales are, and there's a pretty big delta. I think they've, especially in commercial areas, really done some work recently, over the last few years, on land values and I think structure values, but I think the biggest things you've seen are land values. And so you are seeing that correct up, too, right? And we all have those examples that we can think about, but I know, especially in some of our more densely populated commercial areas, and we know from some of our own land sales, what the taxable value, even though we're not paying taxes on it, versus what we were offered, is there's a big difference, and I think you are seeing a correction on those, and probably will continue to see that over the next few years, because we see where some of them are challenged, but it's likely going to have to adjust up.
That's what's shown on page five, if you go back two slides, that adjustment is right there. See how the blue, the two blue lines, I mean, the blue in the middle and the brown towards the top or maroon or whatever color that is, that's multifamily and commercial. The appraisal district focused on those this year, and that's where the adjustment, the catching up to market values in those two categories, less so in single-family residential, because they've been focused on that the last three or four years.
But is it unfair, Mayor, to conclude that, or inaccurate to conclude, that commercial and multifamily have essentially bailed us out relative to, and that if those types of rocket-to-the-moon valuation assessments aren't consistent next year, then...
They shouldn't be consistent next year, actually, because if they're doing a good job at the appraisal district of catching them up this year, then you're exactly right. Next year, we shouldn't see all that much of an adjustment. Everything will be back to where they believe, and I'm talking about the appraisal district now. They're the ones that decide how to do the appraisals on each of these different classifications of properties. So yeah, they're, what they're doing is they're catching it up. You can call bailing out, but in a way, they were suppressed in terms of value in previous years, because they weren't being evaluated at market rate.
And single-family was carrying their weight for the last few years quite heavily.
These are just percentage increases. These are not the actual contributions to our overall property.
They're percentage increases year-over-year, so.
But notably, in none of the last five years, except this year, has single-family residential not represented number one, or number two, at least, in growth.
But keep in mind, single-family residential, subject to homeowners, a homestead exemption is limited to 10%. So that's one reason, perhaps, that you didn't see them jumping that much, but I can't explain what happens to the appraisal district. That's their own thing, but this year, they're focusing on those other two categories to catch them up.
One last question, the mid-rise and high-rise multifamily that are coming online, do we have an idea of how many of those came online last year that would have increased this?
That would be included in that 3% new value contributed? I believe it's one. So I can double-check that, but the significant number that will come on, we think is going to be next year.
So we may not see a reduction in the multifamily, just with the sheer volume of new construction that's happening right now?
You would see an increase in, on this particular slide, what I would tell you is that new value contributed more than 3%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
So where we were is, we get the preliminary taxable values from the appraisal district, and again, these are just preliminary. These are not final numbers. We go through some math upstairs that is basically a tax return, make some adjustments based off of what data we have at the time, and we have included an estimated proposed tax rate of 48.7430 per $100 of assessed valuation in the FY 26 proposed budget that we presented to you. That is a decrease of 2.5656 cents with .0168832, that would be off of the O and M rate, and a decrease in the debt service rate of .008773.
That about a 5% tax rate reduction.
That is a 5% tax rate decrease. The ad valorem taxes make up 20%, 25%-ish around of the revenue that comes into the general fund, and the general fund, if you remember, is where we pay primarily police and fire from. Another 20%, 25% comes from the sales tax. The sales tax nominally, and nominally is just flat-out, whatever the number is, nominally the sales tax has increased since 2017, 47.1%. However, due to the hyperinflation and COVID money supply infusion, the actual increase related to the purchasing power over that same period has been about 12.1% over eight years. That means it's on average about 1.5% per year over that eight-year period, and that's the purchasing power of what that sales tax brings in. When we talk about sales tax, you'll hear me talk about it in three different ways. You'll hear me talk about year-over-year. Year-over-year means a specific 12-month period compared to the exact same 12-month period the year before, and those are typically on an actual basis or on an estimated basis through the end of the year. So if I'm saying year-over-year, it's on a 12-month period basis compared to the 12 month before. The second way you'll hear me talk about sales tax or anything related to the budget is budget-to-actual. Budget-to-actual is, last year, when we stood, when I stood here and talked to you about numbers, this was the number I told you. This is actually where we think we are. You get a lot of that in March, when we give you the ACFIR report, that is the final, this is where we ended the end of the year. And then the last thing you'll hear me talk about is the year-end estimate. What the year-end estimate is, is our best guess, standing right here now, where we will be on September 30th, our best guess at this particular point in time. So those are the three ways that we'll describe the numbers to you. For example, the FY 25 year-end estimate, so that's right now, year-over-year increase. So if I project out to September and look at last September, that year-over-year increase for FY 25 is .67% in sales tax. That's what we're seeing right now. And that is because, because that includes actually two one-time events, meaning FY 25 has two one-time events. One was a big sales tax audit payment that we received. We normally don't get very large ones. We did get a large one this year. And the second is the TU football game, which I'm sure you all attended. So everybody in the entire state was here, and that was a big event, so we received more sales tax. Newsflash, they're not going to be here in FY 26. So we had to make adjustments for FY 26 related to the sales tax, because we don't have that level of a football game coming to the city that year. So we've made all of those adjustments. And when we've made all of the adjustments that we need to for sales tax audits, for what we're seeing this year, for one-time events like the TU football game, our FY 26 budgeted sales tax amount assumes a 1% increase over what we are estimating our end of the year to be. And that means it's about a $417,000 increase. That's what a 1% increase over where we think we're going to be at the end of this year will result in.
Before you proceed from that slide, if you're done on sales tax, I wanted to make a comment. I really like this graph, because you've already deflated it with a CPU, so it shows us real dollars, real purchasing. so it shows us real dollars, real purchasing. What I was interested in was then comparing that to our population growth during that period because the real number should go up as more people arrive in town and more people buy more things, as we have more retail outlets and so forth. And I will say, having been sitting up here for over 10 years now, I've always thought of, and in some years, it was really true, the sales tax growth really did, and using Mr. Hansey's term, bail us out. It was growing fast and it was great. But if you divide those numbers, which I did last night, by our population in each of those years, you'll find that in 2017, given the population estimates out of the existing conditions report, about 116, 116,000, 116,800 people, and divide that into the 28 million, and do the same, and I guessed at 130,000 in 2025, I think that's fairly close, into the 32 million, you wind up with a $2 gain per capita, from 244 to 246 over that time. So thank goodness for those high years in there that kind of carried us up some, but otherwise, our sales tax, real purchasing power for the city would not have kept up with the city's growth. And I got to thinking about that, with the addition of Costco that kind of brings in regional sales tax and so forth, and all of those other businesses in town, you think we're really gaining on things. We're not just running on a treadmill. But frankly, we need to keep after the sales tax businesses and grow our economy here in order to stay up with population because we really haven't changed the dollars. Now, that's good, we're at least keeping up with inflation and with population growth. But we haven't done what I used to think we were able to do, and that is get ahead of the game with sales tax.
Right, and I think that's why you see that inflated adjustment sales tax number on this graph actually look fairly flat for a number of years, is because it is not growing as much.
I think you said about 1.5% per year, which is about what our population growth apparently has been since 2017.
Yes.
1.5% a year, so.
Yes.
I guess that just means that new people coming in are buying about the same number of sales tax available funds, business services and products as all the rest of us has been doing forever. Interesting thought, anyway, I'd just pass that on for my own edification that it isn't really a bailout, it's just keeping up with what we need to have.
But your numbers, Mayor, were not inclusive of, they weren't inflation-adjusted?
No, they're already inflation-adjusted. I'm using the inflation-adjusted line.
Oh, you did use that.
Yeah, I was just using the inflation-adjusted line, not the, so I already took, she already take that out for me. So all I did was take the population out because we always want to cover inflation and population growth together. And so it was just an interesting little exercise, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So those are the two biggest general sources of revenue that is included in the budget, where there is any type of change, we wanted to point out. There is, however, other revenue that's included in the budget, and those come from fees. This is a little bit of apples and oranges because the fees go into the utility funds as well as some of them go into the general fund. And the first thing I'm going to talk about is the utility fund because that's solely the fees that come in pay for what is in the utility fund. There is no rate increase for electric, water, or wastewater in this budget. There's a slight decrease in the transmission-delivery adjustment as well as a slight change in the solar credit for electric. But all in all, there's no major utility rate increases. However, we did, as I mentioned earlier, tie the planning drainage and roadway maintenance fees to the CPIU, which we are increasing at about 3% as of the end of this year. We did have a presentation that Solid Waste gave you from their consultants that recommended that we tie the solid waste fees to the CPIU for water sewer trash, which is a separate index, not the one for all urban consumers. This budget assumes that we would tie the solid waste to the index that's more appropriate for them, that would increase the solid waste fees by 5% as well as certain specific fees in solid waste were recommended by the consultant to change an additional 5% that is also reflected in this budget. In total, the increase for the CPIU, as well as the change and increase in solid waste, would mean for a single-family home, the average monthly utility bill would increase about $2.97 at those proposed rates per month. Lastly, the last revenue that we're going to talk about, I'm sorry, is that a question?
One of the things that we had talked about, it's strategic, I talked about it, it seemed like there was some support for it, was trying to determine a way to eliminate some of the reconnect fees, disconnect fees, like the things that are almost punitive for people who have electrical disconnects. Have we developed or moved forward with anything on that, or would that be reflected in here?
There is a policy related to disconnect and reconnect fees. We don't typically have those changed, and I'll be happy to send you that policy that is utilized by utility customer service.
And this is not a new policy, this is what's been around since?
No, it's still existing.
So, no, so I think to your question, that would be a council discussion, and we could have that as part of the budget process, but we have not incorporated any change or expected revenue differences from a policy change in this budget. I don't, I mean, based on what I remember the discussion, I don't think it would be a significant, it would be more of a timing, and really it's just a question for the council.
The solid waste, that was a workshop item, as I recall. We did not approve, we would approve as a part of this budget and coupled with it, the fee ordinance in order for that to take effect.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's questions at this point, you can proceed.
Okay, so the last revenue that we were going to discuss is the hotel tax revenue. The hotel tax revenue, we discuss it in the same terms that we do sales tax, year-over-year, budget-to-actual, and year-end estimate. The year-end estimate, year-over-year, hotel tax increase for FY '25, so the year that we're currently in, is about 5.6%. Over budget, when I was standing here last year, that's about 3% more than we had budgeted last year. For FY '26, however, because we do not have any significant events or significant home games like the first TU game in I don't know how many years, as well as like Notre Dame and premier SEC teams coming into town in the fall, we did not incorporate a significant estimate over that 5.6%. We are only increasing it by about a half a percent more. So we're assuming that we're going to be able to bring in some hotel tax revenue, but there's not a big jump that we're assuming in that revenue estimate moving forward.
Could I stop you there? And I understand what you're doing, and I don't disagree with your estimate, but it's my understanding that the tourism efforts that the hotels are making and that our tourism division is making is targeting an awful lot of the midweek conferences, conventions, and so forth. At the margin, that may be a small amount, I don't know. But it would seem to me that if we aren't getting anything out of any of that in terms of increasing occupancy average over the year, or RevPAR over the year, because we're filling in those midweek ones, then maybe we should raise a question of whether the money is well-spent.
That's a question for the council.
I understand the city manager's going to want to debate this with me, but I'm just raising the question that I would raise on Thursday.
Yeah, you certainly can. I think that there was a lot in that statement. One, I mean, if you look up there, rooms occupied is up 5.1%.
That's over last year, but I'm talking about our projections for next year.
Well, I know, I mean, I would just say, these are projections. And as good as our people are, I mean, we basically look at trends, and that's how we're looking at it. So I think it would be, I mean, certainly can talk to them. I wouldn't look at us saying we're not going to program in for specific events that we know what the result would be as any condemnation of the current practice of trying to fill midweek. I think we know that's working, and I think if you look over the past three years, we've seen significant gains, but you have to remember that you have to keep doing that. So while we've had those gains, when you look at things like conferences, it's not the same as property taxes or even sales tax where you can kind of say, okay, whatever we had last year, we can pretty much tack on to that as long as certain things are happening. Every year, you're going to be having to go out and get that business, and it can be cyclical. So you may have a dip even on a good steady rise. So I don't, we can certainly talk about hot expenditures, and we have a lot of folks on our committee and our departments that do that, but I certainly wouldn't recommend we start going against the idea of midweek because just from a opportunity standpoint, and what we have seen in growth, midweek has pushed a lot of it.
Yeah, and I guess basically, if you can push that another, gosh, 1.5% in next year, that still only offsets these big football weekends we've been talking about. We aren't going to have this coming year, so maybe it nets out zero, but you still made gains in some areas you can influence.
And again, I think, and smarter people than me when it comes to this stuff, you just have to be careful, we have to project it as part of governmental budgeting, but you have to be careful getting really dialed into the year-to-year because a year or two or three where you have a bunch of really big events, a year where you don't have a couple of those and you see a dip, isn't necessarily a bad thing or the sign that you're in a bad direction, it just has to do. I mean, for instance, we don't have these big events this year, that doesn't mean we may not have big ones at Texas A&amp;M in the future. We're just trying to basically put it out there. And then, and Mary Ellen may have been about to say this, the other thing is, this is a healthy fund, so we're not in a situation where we really need to make big strategic decisions because we're bumping up against any kind of a resource need. So if we watch something happen and we saw a negative return on investment over a few years, then maybe we would do that, but at this point, all we've really seen over the last few years is really positive gains.
Well, and one of the things I wanted to point out was, we are budgeting half a percent over the FY '25, which does include those major events. So knowing that we're not having another TU game, we still budgeted more knowing that there is a strategy in place to fill what would need to be filled for not having that game here this year.
I predicated my comments on the fact that I understand that you're, you said there was level, and I understand why, one piece offsets the other, thank you.
Okay, so that is where the revenue is forecasted or budgeted for FY '26. And we're going to talk a little bit about the expenses that are included. The majority of the expense in the general fund is pay and benefits for the personnel that is actually performing the work. The pay and benefits strategy for FY '26 is the same strategy as it was for FY '25. That is basically a 3.5%, or I'm sorry, a 3% across-the-board pay scale increase for all employees, a 1% market adjustment for non-step employees, a 3% across-the-board pay scale increase for public safety as well as their annual step if they're eligible, a merit pool and an other pay pool for top-performing non-step employees and specific adjustments as needed, healthcare premiums that will remain flat for the sixth consecutive year in a row, and no increase this year on the city side of those healthcare premiums.
Mary Ellen, can you go back? So help me understand, I mean, they're the same thing, aren't they? The 3% across the board and the 1% market adjustment, how are those different? They're all market adjustments, right?
So one has to do with the pay scales themselves, which is the 3%, they're moving the pay scales, and the 1% is the movement within the pay scale for the individual employee. So if you've been here longer, you move up the chain and closer to the midpoint if you were hired at the lower end.
One of the challenges we've seen is if you only move the scales, which you obviously need to do for everyone if you're trying to keep up with cost of living is, but if you only can move the scales and you have people at the lower end of those scales, which we see a lot of our folks, not all the way up to midpoint, that when people come in, you may have a person in a similar job but with three or four years' experience making at or less what a person coming in brand-new does. So that 1% is hopefully moving them along in the scale so that, you know, in theory, if you're at midpoint because you've been in a role five or six years and someone gets hired in, there's a good range where you can be hired in in your first year in that job where you wouldn't be bumping up against somebody in, say, their fourth or fifth year.
But in terms of impact on the budget, you're right. It's still 4% of the overall pay and benefits budget.
Yes, it's still a 4% number.
In terms of impact on our budget total, yes.
And it's essentially a longevity adjustment, the one point.
Yeah, and we, yes, I mean, we have used those terms to mean different things, but essentially, yes, it is, if you're in a particular job and you're doing it and you're doing it, you know, performing satisfactorily, then yes, you're moving along in there and paying for expertise or longevity or however you want to use it. Versus, if the scale moves, even a person who comes in right after that scale happens is going to benefit from that scale movement.
So the steps for public safety personnel are an amalgamation of longevity and skills attainment?
Yeah, it's a similar thing, and if you look at the way we do this, that's kind of how we have it striated. Two different systems where the non-step employee, right? So the non-step employees are seeing, you know, if you want to say it, total impact to someone who's on the payrolls right now of 4%. If you look at the step folks, they're going to be 3 plus their step, which is going to be, and if I took the full range that I know of, I think there are some people that have 1.24, all the way up to like 1.99. So you're going to see, you know, 4.24 to 5%. So if you're on a step plan, you are most likely getting a higher raise than anyone not on a step plan. However, the top 25% on the non-step plan can see an additional up to 6. So that's kind of how it bounces.
That last piece being merit-based increases.
Correct, that's correct. So it's the top 25%, but that's the merit. So you kind of have two choices. If you're non-step, you could get a 6% raise if you're on the top 25%, which would be more than people on the step plan. But if you're on the step plan, the step plan's going to get a higher raise than essentially 75% of the non-step.
So true or false, the 1% market adjustment for non-public safety personnel differs from the annual step increases in that the 1% for non-public safety is a longevity compensatory matter, whereas the step increases are longevity and skills or certification attainment?
No, I think they're, in a way, the same. I mean, we don't define it that narrowly, but the idea is that if I'm in a job doing it well over a period of time, so longevity, then I'm better at it, so I would have a higher skill than, the only difference is you don't have the option in that 1% like you would in a public safety step plan where you can actually see step jumps based on certain certifications and things. So there are specific things within the organization outside of this basic where, you know, you have career progressions and things like that that could, you know, basically give you a promotion. But that's one thing public safety has that this doesn't have. So within their step, yes, it is how long they've been here and assuming they've done the right thing. It's assuming a public safety person also is better at their job. There is a component to that, to the 1% as well. The difference being is that you, on the 1% side, you can't take a step because you've gotten, you know, say, your Master Peace Officer certification.
Is it possible to get a step increase without obtaining a new certification?
Yes, yes, and for most people, that's what it is. It's based on their job description or rank, and then their annual years of service.
Very good, thank you.
So again, because personnel is a huge amount of what goes through the general fund, I wanted to kind of back up a little bit and show you where we're at for FY '25 before we got into what's included in the FY '26 budget related to the number of personnel. So last year, when I was standing up here for FY '25, council had approved a total of 1,071 and 1/2 personnel. 1,071 and a half personnel. During the year, we came to you with budget amendments. Those budget amendments added 16 additional people, two full-time mental health peace officers that came via a CIT grant through the Office of the Governor of the State of Texas, 12 firefighters, which was the Phase One for Fire Station Number Seven, that was funded via a SAFER grant, one Northgate District Manager, and an over hire for a solid waste driver for that was authorized in prior year. We're going to discuss the over hires in a minute and what that word means. For FY26, we're starting with where we ended budget amendment number two, so 1,087 and a half people. There were some base budget changes that are recognized in the FY26 budget, which include the reorganization of community services after the retirement of the director and assistant director, and movement of those personnel to planning, fire, and some remaining in Northgate. That's all of the numbers you see moving around in the second column. So we're starting with a total of two less people than I told you in budget amendment number two. Included in the FY26 proposed budget is an additional 23 personnel, primarily public safety, 12 additional proposed firefighters to complete the complement of those needed to staff Fire Station Number Seven, six additional police officers, one patrol lieutenant, and five officers, along with four vehicles for them, and all of the equipment that's needed to support those six officers, as well as an additional six police officers that are included via the over hire process. The over hire process is a process that we are going to formalize in the budget and fiscal policies. This is a process that has previously existed in the city, but we are actually putting some words around it to define it because of the vacancies throughout the city, not just in public safety, but throughout the city. So vacancy, as a reminder, is not the same thing as turnover. Vacancy is the percentage of approved budgeted positions that go unfilled at any given time. We look at those at the first of the month every single month. And the vacancy rate is budgeted at 3%, meaning that there's going to be people that are going to retire at any given point, move away, get a new job, whatever. And we are going to have to fill those positions, and there may not be an overlap. It may take a little bit longer because of the skills needed. And we have historically budgeted that at 3%. We are adding language to the budget and fiscal policies that will actually put that 3% in writing, that that is the target for the vacancy rates. We are also adding language because we are significantly short of the number of people that we have been able to fill when we add some of these positions in certain departments. And we are adding this over hire process in writing in the budget and fiscal policies that say, if you approach that 3%, then you can fill out the request documentation that will go to the Human Resources Department and City Managers Office to determine whether or not we can start the hiring process, even though we haven't directly come to council and said, we need another body in this department, and this is why. We have factored in six additional police officers into that process, meaning they don't show up in FY26. They do show up in FY27 and going forward because we believe because of their cyclical nature of when they're hiring and their academies and all of that happens, that those that over hire, if it happens, will be towards the end of FY26 or into FY27. And we would come back at that point in time and let you know that's where we are. But I'm letting you know that there's six that are budgeted this year and six that are in that are in the over hire process, that if they can fill them and we need to come back, we can come back for them.
Ms. McLean has a question.
So you're essentially using that 3% buffer as a hiring window should we need to use it prior to coming forward for approval? Because technically, it's already approved within that you have approval up to that 3%. I think this is pretty ingenious.
So just to, man, I hate to say anything after you said ingenious. So really, what it means is, we we are saying we're going to have to account to pay 97% of our salary value. But because we see although it's trending down, still, at a big organization like us, cyclical nature, 8%, there's essentially a 5% gap in funding there, right? So that 5% is what we're using. And the part that I do think is is very good operationally is, as you guys know, one, we are a very big and very diverse organization. Like, we do so many different things. So that trying to align when we have an opening with what candidate we have and all is challenging. Now, public safety, especially PD, we've had the over hiring for a long time, right? And the idea is, you're going to have some turnover every year. So if I have five open positions and we have eight great candidates, fine, hire the three. Eventually, it'll work itself out. If we ever get to a point that it's like, we're just so up at the top, then we'll we'll deal with it. One of the reasons we have the positions laid out this way is also just from accounting perspective, what we don't want to do is dump more open positions that we don't feel like we can fill on the bottom line of the budget, because there's other things that go along with that. But now we're just looking at this holistically and saying, okay, if it works great, and PD, maybe there are other places in the organization where we've got one position, you know, but but there's, you know, two really great people, or we could really we know that we have a large number in a certain position, and we see, you know, turnover in that, we can go ahead and over hire. And the budget will still balance out operationally, won't have an issue.
So we're basically using the naturally occurring churn to account for headcount.
That's right. And and one of the alternatives we looked at previously was adjusting that number and saying, we don't need to budget at 97%. Maybe we only need to budget at 96%. And then that would give us additional money to do things. And that may be something we do in the future after we watch this occur over time. That's another lever that could be pulled to make sure we're we're getting maximum out of our revenue. But yeah, that's basically we're playing with the the 5% between where we where we budget and what we see in actuals to be able to, you know, try to hire the best people when we have that opportunity versus being stuck in in just the bureaucratic piece of it.
So that is why you will see the changes in the budget and fiscal policy document that was will be provided to you. It'll be redlined, and you'll be able to see those. But salaries isn't the only thing that we pay for. And we know that there is a significant amount of increase that has happened in the budget. And we take take care to make sure that all operational costs are adjusted the best that we possibly can. For example, in FY26, the operational cost management reductions, which would be things that come from the operational departments that do not relate to salaries, amounted to about $600,000, $200,000 that were in fixed and contractual cost savings that were identified, as well as an additional $400,000 in cost savings that have been identified by specific departments as expenses that were included in their budget and no longer needed. And so they turned them back in and said, we do not need this any longer. Using the FY26 comparable city example, this chart is shows the per capita budgeted expenditures in the general funds for each of our comparable cities. Most of the comparable cities cities have similar revenue sources as we do and similar percentages, meaning sales tax and property taxes, and fees as well. Typically, College Station is below the mean average of our comparable cities, which is what this chart shows you. And the city of Bryan is above that mean average. We do want to take care to note that while there has been change in the city of College Station since from 2020 to 2025, we do take specific care to make sure that we review all expenses, not just salary expenses, but all expenses to keep this per capita number as reasonable and as low as we possibly can.
And Mary Ellen, I just want to hit a couple of things real quick on this. One, I will just say, anytime you're looking at these charts, we try to show a bunch of different things to to be able to paint a picture of where you're at. And we do the best we can apples to apples on this one. One of the reasons I do like this is because a lot of times, and we'll certainly hear it, there's a discussion about, oh, we have a low tax rate, but your valuations are there, you know, those kind of comparisons. This is just looking at what does it cost per person, right? So all those things thrown out, what are what are we spending on it? One of the other things I want to note here, though, is while we still are and have maintained ourselves underneath the average, and certainly compared to our neighbor, but really, I look at the average, you do see an uptick, especially over the last few years. And I mean, there's a lot of reasons for that. Obviously, the stuff everybody's gone through, which is inflation and those things. But really, what you're seeing on ours is a huge investment, honestly, in public safety. And if you look over the last five years, it's 56 positions. If you look since we passed this budget last year, and assuming that you that you adopted the budget that's proposed to you, that's 38 public safety positions over the last essentially two years. So you were when you when you use something or when you increase something that is obviously one one of the higher cost per employee numbers, and is a big portion of our budget, you're going to see that number go up. So again, we've we've had a gap that we've been after as it relates to how we how we do public safety on the police side. And now we have kind of the easier thing to see is we have a new fire station, which has to be staffed. When you're when you increase your public safety, you're going to see that that per capita number go up. But to me, one of the telling signs is even with a pretty massive investment on the public safety side, we're still able to maintain a per capita cost underneath the mean average.
Mary Ellen, explain, just for the general reference, the 26 comparable cities, is that what we've always used, the 75,000 to 150,000 Texas cities in Texas, correct?
Yes.
Population bracketed?
Population bracketed that we have always used. The reason why we don't have that particular chart that people like to see is because we're first. So we would be comparing our proposed tax rate for FY26 to FY25.
No, I see you got you got 2025 on here because you got budgets for everybody from this is budgeted.
Correct.
Now, budgeted expenditures, and it's general fund only. So it means our enterprises and there are different cities that have lots of different kinds of enterprises. So they're they're left aside. We're only looking at the general revenue, the general fund, where property taxes are employed directly.
Correct. And it is only the expenditures. It doesn't have anything to do with how they pay for it. It is just how much are they spending?
Now, when you when you have lots of spare time in the middle of next winter, deflate all of those numbers. And then let me look at them on a even on a per capita basis, but definitely.
That's a new one. Okay.
Oh, there are in per capita. There are in a per capita. So that's good. Yeah, it wouldn't change the relative because you'd be using the same deflator for all of them.
This is inclusive of salaries expense, of course.
Yes, yes. Salary expense that would be included in the general fund.
And the mayor alluded to there's 26 cities in this market basket?
Yes.
One one thing I'd like to see, and I can do it myself if I know who the who the cities are.
I didn't bring my last year's budget, but it's in and it will be in the final document that we have.
Okay.
Look, Melissa has it, so I don't have to climb.
Something I'd like to see is, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse on this, but I'd like to see in the gold average across those 26 cities, what the average sworn peace officers is, and a comparison of us to them.
You want to see the number of police officers? That should be in everybody's budget like it is ours. But sometimes it's harder to find.
Yeah, some it depends. I don't know that they're able to get that granular on each 20 each 26 of these.
And do you mean it just overall number or per capita? Or what are you looking for?
Head count. And I appreciate what we've done relative to to the six over hires for a total of 12. I mean, 12 in fire and 12 in police. That's, you know, significant. But I'd still I'd just be curious, you know, how do we stack up in headcount of sworn peace officers to the other 26 cities in the market basket and municipalities that we're comparing ourselves to?
Yeah. And I the only thing, and that's easy enough, I would say, I would encourage, and we can have the discussion, the reason we do a study about is really about how we police and responsiveness. Because especially in this situation, what you will not see is, we do not count A&amp;M's police force if you do that number. And they obviously play a role into it. And I I mean, I wouldn't, I'm not going to get into is it equivalent to having that many police officers on our force or whatever. But I think that's one of the reasons that we and during the budget process, y'all can obviously, you have the chief here, he'll do a better job explaining it. But that's one of the reasons we do the study is because it actually just shows you what we do proactively versus reactively. And probably at least some of those cities have similar studies that we could also bring into it outside of just the pure number piece. But I'm sure the number is easy enough to get different. There are different sizes and things, but you can, you know, draw some conclusions from that.
Right. Thank you.
You've got a lot of slides to go through yet. Please proceed.
So I mentioned that we look at everything on a five-year basis. We don't want to include anything in your proposed FY26 budget that we don't think would be sustainable five years out. And we are required by city charter to bring to you a balanced budget. A balanced budget means that our recurring revenues equals our recurring expenses. So the where we are at, this is the five-year forecast as of now, our SAFER grant, which is the last grant that we have for the staffing on Fire Station Seven, will run out in FY28. That is why there is a slight negative number in FY28. We are assuming our sales tax is going to continue to grow between 2 and 2.7%. So we agree with you, Mayor, that we need to continue to focus on the sales tax side side of things for for the city. One thing I wanted to point out with that five-year forecast is while the SAFER grant does run out in FY28, and it does show a $420,000 negative number there, that is far enough out in the future, and there's enough guesstimates included in this estimate, that I do not think that that is an insurmountable number, particularly when you look at 29 and 30, and we're back in the positives. So we we do believe that we are providing you a sustainable balanced budget with the proposed budget you have in front of you.
So you when you-
Go back.
On that chart, you you mentioned that since 2017, you believe the sales tax increased 1.5%.
Right.
And you're you're going for 2 to 2.7%.
Yes. And I have stood up here before where council has thought I was a little too conservative. So we're not being conservative.
Also, that one and a half percent is inflation adjusted. So on this one, we're saying it's going to go up 2 to 2.7 inclusive.
Nominal versus.
Yeah.
Okay, so the last piece for the general fund has to do with the fund balance. We are estimating that for FY26, the fund balance will be somewhere around $92.3 million, of which $25.8 million is required by the reserve policy of 20% or the federal opioid abatement that can only be spent on certain things. We have another $17,464,000 that has been set aside in a staff recommended budget that is for particular things like the reserve for the bond rating, because council has wanted us to maintain our bond rating, specific council requests or economic incentives for 380s, the state Highway Six relocation. And we did include this year, a $5 million amount in there for federal uncertainty. And that relates to the federal grant process. If you remember, in January, the federal grant process kind of was a little contentious. And so we set aside some money just to be sure that if something happens in the future, the city is covered for anything that we might have committed to under those that grant process. Whether or not we're going to need it, we don't know. But we did include a an amount for that.
Please expound briefly on your 20% reserve.
The 20% reserve is required by policy.
20% of what?
20% of expenditures.
Of expenditures?
Of expenditures.
General?
It amounts to somewhere around 65, maybe 70 days worth of expenses if something happened. If something happened to all our revenue, and there was a catastrophic whatever, and we could not collect any sales tax or property tax, it would sustain the city for approximately 70 days or so.
Thank you.
There is an additional 28,000, or $28,700,000 that has been set aside for one-time future capital projects and vehicles. These are requests that were made by prior councils that have not been utilized at this point. But we still have not, since we have not been directed to move them, they are still sitting in that bucket. And then we have another $20,334,000 that would be unassigned, which means that there is no design on that money at all.
Mary Ellen, what's, if you might, what's the difference between the discretionary and the council request?
So on the council, on the staff recommendation, which is, it used to be called assigned fund balance. The staff recommendations are very specific items. For example, there is $120,000 that was set aside for a special election. If council chooses to go out for a tax rate election, the city has to bear that cost. So we have set aside money at a prior council's request to make sure that, that, um, decision could be preserved, and there was no cost related to that actual decision for future councils. There's a specific grant matching dollars. Every time we go out for a grant, we need to have matching dollars if we are awarded that grant. One of those, uh, items has to do with like the trees that were planted. We needed a specific amount of money set aside for those trees. So that is where we set aside that money for grants that we think we're going to get. The, that's what's in that staff recommendation column versus the, um, unassigned, where council has not directed us to do anything with that money. Okay. So the next, uh, large piece of our budget has to do with the capital plan. If you remember, when we started this presentation, I told you that we had, um, our capital request had been reduced by 51%. That is because we already have a significant amount of appropriations for major projects, like the completion of Fire Station Number 7. That does not mean that we're stopping on that, it just means that we're continuing with that process. Streets and sidewalks and signal enhancements, particularly the Rock Prairie Road Rehab, as well as the Capstone realignment processes are still ongoing. We have the Public Works Operations Center. Last year, council appropriated $5 million for us to go into the design phase for the Public Works Operations Center. However, we're not at the point yet where we need to come back to council and ask for the appropriations for the construction phase for that, because the design of that facility would need to be done and brought to council before we ask for those appropriations. So we're not asking for that at this point in time. We are, however, asking for appropriations related to the city baseball fields. Last year, we had anticipated that the appropriation for the city baseball field would be approximately $6 million. We are asking for $8 million instead, because as we've gone through this process and have determined what the payback period for the hot funds would be, it seems as though it would be a little bit more appropriate for us to utilize a little bit more general funds than hot funds for those baseball fields out at Veterans Park. Related to our utilities, if you remember in Budget Amendment 2, I came back and asked for a, um, permission for us to be able to utilize cash for capital this year and not issue any debt related to the electric fund. We are planning in FY '26 to continue with that in utilizing $21.6 million of cash for electric and issue no debt. We will, however, be, need to be issuing debt for the water and wastewater capital plans, which would include three new wells, the three new wells that we talked about, state, the state highway 6 relocation, and some water well rehab projects, and wastewater treatment improvements, and a Carter Grove rehab project related to wastewater.
Ms. McElhany?
Can you restate what you said about hot funds, is it related to the baseball fields?
Yeah, so we are asking, instead of asking from, for $6 million from the general fund, we are asking for eight this year. And the reason why we're asking for that 2 million more is the hot funds have a return on investment calculation that needs to be done based off of number of tournaments, who's using the fields, who's going to use them during the daytime. Now that we're farther down that process, we can do a better estimate, and we think it would be better if, to make sure that we get that ROI, that we take $8 million from the general fund instead of the other way that we had, had planned for it last year.
How much does it have coming from hot?
Six instead. We had, we had it flipped. We had eight million coming from hot and six from the general fund, and we just flipped it.
Thank you.
Is that because your confidence in the ROI is you'd rather not be on the hook relative to the hot funds?
Yes.
Thank you for the direct answer.
Math, this math. Okay, so with the capital plan, we have to issue debt in order to be able to do the capital plan. These are the future debt issuances for the next five years. This does not include the debt issuance that we will be bringing to you for FY '25. That is the $35 million that I talked to you about a couple of months ago, that's not on this slide. This is 26 going forward. Right now, we are estimating that for 26, we are going to be coming to you requesting to issue $91.9 million of debt, of which about 70 million of it relates to utility, with 50 million of that relating to water. The general fund supports the governmental debt. The governmental debt is debt that is related to the streets, parks, facilities, and technology. And the way we do the five-year forecast on that, to predict out what we think we need to be able to pay off the debt, is we, or debt, is we look at what we have committed already in the capital plan, the debt that is rolling off, and how much estimated capacity. So when we're talking capacity, the capacity relates only to the general fund side for streets, parks, facilities, or technology. And that is the, the amount that is currently uncommitted, which is about $20 million a year for the next five years.
So you're, you're benchmarking, you're trying to stay away from 2% of assessed valuation, because if you bump into that 2%, that threatens the bond rating, correct?
Uh, it, yes, they, it would not, it, it would be a factor that would play into the bond rating, and why, when they look at everything, they might consider that we are not being appropriately managed. But what we, when we do this calculation, what we actually look at is where is the, the debt rate right now? It is not staff's decision to increase the debt rate, it's y'all's decision. So we look at what is the amount that we have for any new capital projects within our existing debt rate?
Yeah, and I think I just, we're, we're going to talk, my guess is, a lot about capital spending, especially if you see what you have in available cash and what you have in available capacity. So I don't want to belabor it now, but just to say that how we construct the budget, you kind of get different flavors as it, when it comes to O and M. We tell you really specifically, I say, this is what I think, you know, here it is chopped up exactly. This is how many positions that. On the, the debt side, there are things that we put in there, but they're going to be based on a few different. Hey, the council has said, we want a ballpark, so we, we program in for that. I have said, I want, I, I'm proposing to you that we build a public works facility. So that's already in this number, not in that 95 there, those type of things. But then there's a, there are all those projects out there that exist that you all really have to decide, that are not necessarily an operational piece that we're saying, we recommend you do this. So that's one piece of it. So what we do from a, a standpoint of how we give you these numbers is, we say, well, we're generally going to assume that you want to do things like keep the, the debt side of the tax rate the same, keep our percent of assessed valuation the same. The growth is going to be, um, you know, relatively similar. We kind of just set those parameters up. The second part of it is, when you guys go through that, you can either fill those up completely and say, I'm going to use all this that you've laid out for us. You can say, we, we want to use less of it, and then obviously this changes. Or you could say, and this is the, this is the situation where I'd say it wouldn't necessarily negatively affect your bond rating, is the council could say, we have something that we want to do that's so important that it's going to change one of those ratios, or we're going to raise the tax rate on the debt side, or whatever that is. But that is really y'all's call. Now, if you come back and say, we want to build, you know, two things that cost $100 million each, then we're going to tell you, okay, here's, you're going to use all your cash, and you're going to use all your capacity, and then this is what you're going to have to do to be able to make that, and then this is what your percent of evaluate, or assessed valuation will be, and on and on. But generally, as we construct capital, we do so with certain things that we've put in or have been put in and approved in the past. And that's where you guys come back and say, given what we've got, we either want to use it as you've set up the parameters, or what, what do we need to do to achieve some other goal that may or may not fit within those parameters?
And namely?
Your, your, your opening statements indicated that a lot of that discussion is going to be on the 16th.
Right, sure. I mean, all of this, but yes.
We don't have to decide that tonight, we're not getting into that kind of discussion.
No, I just wanted to be clear, kind of, that's, that's a little different than the O and M, where we, where we get specific.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. And just top level, city manager, the three things, namely not included, or I think they're earmarked only in general fund balance, but that would be Convention Center, Rec Center, and Wolfpen Creek Improvements.
Well, yeah, I mean, the list would go on longer. What you end up doing at Northgate, if you do something over there, what you do if, at Hensel Park, what you do at the West Side, what you do at Texas Independence, any additional at Veterans. And I mean, there's a long list, but of the ones people probably hear of, all of those things would, would be what we're looking to council to fit into those. And while we can certainly provide feedback and things, you know, picking between one or the other is a little different than like, I'm saying, I want you to do a public works center. There's a reason we're saying that to you. But between this park and this park, that's really more of it. Or this future road and this future road, that falls to the council.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Mary Ellen, remind me again, I might have missed, so what's, in the previous slide as well, what's happening in your forecast in 2029? Because you have no.
So in 2020, in 2029, where we don't have any governmental debt issued out there, is we will have completed the entire current general obligation, which is where we've asked the citizens to vote on what they would like to see done. There was a bunch of parks and the Fire Station Number 7. All of that will have been completed, and we don't know what's going to happen when we go out for the next GO bond offering, which will be in 2027. So because of that, we don't really have much out there, except $2 million for a street project that Public Works would have advised us to include.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's really part of that, that capacity that the council needs to look at when you're thinking about that list of things that Mr. Nancy was talking about and others. There will be, by, by 2027, two years from now, the discussion will be, 2029, there'll be something other than zero there, I assume. Assuming that this council and the following council brings these ideas together. Okay, thank you, we can proceed.
So we would be remiss if we're talking about the entire budget, and I didn't talk to you about where we are with the utility funds. So the electric fund, where we are at with the electric fund, is it is a healthy fund. We have a working capital requirement of 18%. As I indicated, we have, uh, planned for one-time cash for capital to fund as much as we can, including it in this forecast, and we have no planned rate increases. For water, water includes a one-time cash for capital transfer of $13 million across the entire period. They are not as cash flush as the electric department is. And with having to build three additional wells, we are most likely going to be back here asking for an additional rate increase at some point in time in 26, or I'm sorry, in 27 or 28, related to the debt service that's going to be required on those wells.
Mary Ellen, real quick, I think I know the answer, I do know the answer, so I'm going to ask it anyway. You can do a fund transfer from enterprise to general government, subject to, and we do about 15 million a year, right?
So it's a little bit lower than that, it's about 14 million. And there's, and there is a couple of things that get transferred. One is for what's, what we are, you'll see in your book called shared services. Shared services is because the electric, water, wastewater, and those utilities, they don't have a finance department, or an HR department, or a legal department. And if they were standalone businesses, they would need to have those costs. So they are allocated certain time from the finance department, HR, legal, IT, that type of thing, for the work that is done on their behalf. That's one transfer. The other transfer that you're referring to is a specific policy amount. For electric, it's 8%. For the other utilities, it's 10%. Where there is a specific amount that can be transferred to the general fund, because we own and operate those businesses. And there is a, very, it's based off of kilowatt hours that go through the system on electric, and blah, 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 blah. But we transfer, we transfer a specific amount in, in lieu of a dividend to the general fund to offset.
Can you cross the streams and transfer funds from Enterprise A to Enterprise B?
No.
Is that a, is that a law restriction or a policy restriction?
So that is not a policy description, uh, uh, that is not by policy. However, I don't know if you go as far as law goes, we would fail an audit if we did that.
So if you, looking at it, if, if by policy, you wanted to move money from one to the other, and, and for example, there, there have been years where there, there were some functions in electric that water and wastewater helped, helped pay for. By policy, the council could look at moving things from, potentially from, from one to another. I think that would have to be, it is not something that we, that we do on a routine basis, but it is certainly an option that is available.
Technically, we would record that as a loan from one fund to the other. So from a technical standpoint, we would not, it, it's not a gift from one fund to the other. We would have, they would ultimately have to pay it back, and that is what has happened for, like, we did that with solid waste. They needed some trucks and one of the other fund type.
So if you're, if you're doing a, a project and one has to move their utilities and the other, you can use, you know, if we have to, if we're doing something with an electric utility on a project that water is doing, electric can pay for that, so you could move it that way or pay for it separately. You obviously, you still can, we don't do this typically, but while those funds can be transferred into the general fund as we do now, you can transfer out of the general fund into individual funds. Again, not something that, that we do, but if you were to see a situation, and we certainly looked at all of them when Winter Storm Yuri came up, and we didn't have enough to operate, we could have transferred out of the general fund and, into that fund. So you, you can do that. Real quickly, too, since we're on this, I, I try to bring this up every year because it gets conflated. When it comes to our debt, we, there are different kinds of debts you can issue for utilities. And the electric, again, we cash fund a lot of it, but water and wastewater, we issue that debt through the city, backed by our tax rate, which gets us better rates, better rates for our, our customers. But you see that debt load on our overall debt load. And if you're ever comparing us to other cities that have utilities, and again, even our sister city with, with BTU, they carry that debt load on, on their rates. So, on revenue bonds. So when, you know, if you're going to compare apples to apples as far as like debt per capita or those types of things, you have to remember that we're carrying the utility on ours, which means you also need to carry that revenue. So just something that gets brought up a lot is like, oh, we have all this debt. And if you actually break it out and compare us to other cities that just carry municipal debt versus our municipal debt, it's, it's totally different.
And, and just to add on to that, the.
And just to add on to that, when we do that, it is the revenues from the respective utility that is paying for that debt that is backed, as City Manager was saying, by the tax rate. So again, just to be very clear, if it's an electric capital project and we issue a certificate of obligation, the electric rate is designed to cover that cost. Water rate is designed to cover its cost. Wastewater rate is designed to cover its cost.
One of the main points that we need to talk about here, cross-subsidization, when you have areas of the city that are served by different utilities, is probably not an easy thing to figure out, because the water people are different than the electric people in some areas. And general revenue is every taxable property inside the city limits. The only thing we provide is wastewater to everybody and sanitation, but electric and water are provided by some other people. So cross-subsidization among those is not an easy thing, and that's why we probably haven't done it much. There, I suppose there is an example where some functions, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the SCADA operations that were in electric are now, isn't water also using some of that? So there's already a cost accounting inside that to allocate certain costs to water, I assume, and wastewater.
Yeah, we go through an entire exercise to allocate, yes, to allocate to the appropriate utility their share of costs.
And just to, just to add this comment, I think, and Mary Ellen's correct, by recording things as a loan from one to another, we will do all the things to make sure we never fail an audit. So I just wanted to come back and make that comment there. I know what she meant by that, but I just felt like I wanted to, and have never failed one, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Okay, so wastewater looks very similar to where water is. We are anticipating that there is going to be a need for additional debt service in wastewater. However, a future rate increase is going to be dependent upon when that debt is actually needed. We think it's farther out than the water, which would be needed sooner because of the drilling of the wells. The last five-year forecast, now that your mind is completely numb with numbers, that we're going to talk about, has to do with the hot fund or the hotel tax fund. This is the five-year forecast for the hotel tax fund. FY '26 is reflected the 6 million instead of 8 million for the baseball fields, because again, as I mentioned, we kind of flip-flopped them based off of the return on investment that we are anticipating, based off of some refined calculations. There are a number of other funds that are not included in this discussion. These funds are not less important, but they are reflective of some very nuanced, specific revenues and specific expenses that are included in your packet, but they're not going to be discussed in this presentation. And I'll be happy to take any questions related to any of these funds as you dive deeper into that document. With that, if there are any more questions related to your FY '26 proposed budget, we have a public meeting that will be on the 16th, starting at 8:30 in the morning, that y'all can ask whatever questions you would like.
I don't see any appetite for more questions. Let's move to item 2.2, which is a presentation, discussion, possible action, and calling a public hearing on the City College Station FY '25, '26 proposed budget for Thursday, July 24, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council Chambers.
So Mayor, there is no presentation with this. All I need is a motion and a second from council for exactly what the public hearing date, time, and place are, and then a vote.
Do I see a motion to approve, Mr. White? A second by Mr. Yancey to adopt that time and date and location that was just read. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Therefore, thank you very much, oh, thank you very much, Mary Ellen, city manager, staff, for setting this up. We're going to have a lively discussion on the 16th, I'm sure. So thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned.